We're now live streaming and just welcome everybody. I'd just like to say that we've got several board members that are not here physically, but are calling in remotely. And I know that I've had calls from several of them to let me know that they'll be calling in and listening in. So we've got, I think, Mr. Clark's calling in, Mr. Patrick's calling in, Mr. Rogers is calling in. Dr. Rogers said he might be a little bit late, but he may have to call in. And Mr. Henson said he was going to call in. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Nolte and let him present to us.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. These work sessions that Dr. Garrett and you all started many years ago are very helpful to have some time for you all to talk and digest information. And I do think it also saves us some time on Monday night sometimes if you all had a chance to talk about it. And of course, you know, the public has access to, you know, physically to the meetings now, as well as we have been live streaming throughout COVID. So we have three public things that we want to talk about. I'll start off with ESER funds. We've not done a very elaborate explanation of those for the public, so sort of do that Jill Barker will do a summer school update, and it has been a true team effort. So Dr. Putnam, Mr. Heinz may add some information there, and certainly you all may have questions along the way for any of the topics. And then Dr. Putnam can give you, will give you an update on some general support services. And then in closed session, we just want to try to save some time for Monday night. Mr. Francis, if you're willing for us to give you some updates on things we might bring to you on Monday.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. So starting off with ESER, for folks who haven't heard about this before, ESER is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds Act. Those are emergency relief funds. They're directly tied to past, present, and future impacts of COVID-19. In addition to federal funding, public school systems in North Carolina have also been receiving some GEAR funds. And I did not write that acronym down, but for those who want to know, those are governors' allocated state funds. Okay? So we received an initial allotment of some federal funds really right in the middle of the pandemic. I mean, you know, we were shut down two years ago in March, and then as we rolled to the end of July, we had the first allotment of federal ESER funds that we could use for the past, current, or future impact of COVID. And then we also received some GEAR funds, some governors appropriated funds. That actually came out in 13 different program codes. So those funds, and I'll tell you that for a reason, because as future money comes, it will look differently. 13 program codes. And we received a really nice amount of money last summer into the fall. Some of those allocations came really late. Dr. Putnam will tell you that I was helping him get PPE and other supplies out of one line that was pretty general, and then they finally gave us the PPE line. But anyway, they gave us $3,313,000, $313,000, and it's about gone. Okay? We needed it. It is just about gone. We made very good use of that money. We spent it on last summer's summer school, which wasn't as big as normal, and they called it Jump Start. You all remember that we were authorized actually to bring kids, students into the building and serve them face to face. We were one of a few school systems who actually did that. We added some additional mental health support on our campuses, put some people at the Middle Academy, because we knew students coming out of COVID had had a lot of stuff going on socially and emotionally with those funds. We bought a lot of iPads and Chromebooks for students to use, because we started the year, as you all know, from August to the end of September, all remote. And we used a ton of that money for iPads and computers and remote learning. There was some money there to help child nutrition. That money was pretty tight, and again, it had to be related to COVID, and we couldn't really use any of that money for their salaries. But they did some very creative things, like buying a refrigerated trailer and some things like that to help them transport food. And so there were child nutrition funds. We updated a lot of staff computers, so our teachers who were talking to students who were remote would actually have a camera on their computer. Some of our computers didn't have a camera or a good mic on them. So we did good upgrades on some staff devices. We had money for hotspots, and that was helpful for students who lived in a home where they didn't have Wi-Fi but had a good reception. And we also had some really nice donations of hotspots and other supplies, masks and other supplies, from people in the community. We added exceptional children's support, and you know, we did some work early in the year with children who had an IEP. We brought, some of those students came in early and received some help and support, and we had an extra person available in that department to do some things with students who were more likely to lag behind. There was a tiny bit of money in there for cybersecurity, only about $15,000, but we added that to our work that we did to recover from the ransomware, which was allowable with the funds. I think it was PRC 165 when it finally came in. Dr. Putnam was for the PPE. And we bought cleaning supplies and materials, equipment, archways, scanners, what I love to call, you all know, the Ghostbuster guns, that when you have a problem in the room, you go in, spray the room. And it, Dr. Putnam has explained this to you all before, it electrostatically touches all the surfaces, even underneath the table. And then we did some bonus pay, which was allowed, you all will remember, for some of our classified employees. It's my phone ringing, my son's calling me, so y'all disregard that if you can hear that, if you're listening in. We had a lot of frontline workers who worked long, extra hard hours, who don't typically have to work or get to work. You know, loading buses, hauling food and doing those kinds of things. And we were able, for a period of time in the late summer, early fall, to provide some bonus money for those workers. The first round of that $3 million, 3.3 million, will be gone completely by Christmas. There are some things left. It's amazing how quickly that money went. So that's the first money. Any questions about that? There are some, still a few things we will do with that. We can use some of it in relation to the summer programming that we're doing, and we will want to expend those funds before we get too deep into ESER II, which is coming and larger. And I want to tell you all what our plans are for there and how our plans are not completely conclusive at this point. Any questions about the first ESER money? We did talk about those funds from time to time with various groups. So ESER II should be dropped for us sometime later this month. Lisa Thompson, our Federal Programs Director, has been invaluable in making sure that we follow all the rules and we're spending these funds on things that truly are connected to COVID, either what the damage that has already been done, what is going on right now, and we still do have some limitations, and future work related to COVID. The next drop of funds will be available for use through the fall of 2023. So it's over time. The first drop was smaller because it was intended to catch us up on some things, because we got closed down two years ago in March, and we were scrambling to get extra computers and all those things we needed to teach students. And the money came in after the fact for some of that. ESER II for us is $6.2 million. And that sounds like a load, but I'm just telling you, it will go quickly also. It really, really will. I've told a lot of the administrators, principals, and directors and people that I've talked into, this is a lot of money, but it's really not Christmas or Halloween where we're passing out candy. It's going to go pretty quickly to the needs that are related to COVID. And the problem with ESER II is I think we just have to have summer school and know if we have 600 students, or 1,000 students, or 2,000 students. And we're in the process of doing those registrations, and Mrs. Barker will tell you about all that in just a moment. But the number of students that we have in summer school will tell us how much of this money will really be available after we do our big summer school push. So again, these funds are just like the first funds. It's for the past, present, and future impact of COVID-19, and we think that the funds will go pretty quickly. It's amazing that that much money would go pretty quickly. We anticipate, and this is early, early anticipation based upon eligible students, the registration information's going out tomorrow. Mrs. Barker will tell you more about that in a minute, but we anticipate that out of the 6.2, we may spend as much as a million or 1.2 million in summer learning salaries. Lots of teachers, some directors that we've talked to you all about running the camps, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and other people to support. It will be a summer learning program like we have never had before. It will be many times larger. We hope that the students will come that we have invited. And so right up front, easily a million dollars in salaries could be used toward just the salaries for the summer learning. One of the other great things that I know our Buildings and Grounds Committee will be glad to hear about, and we don't know the exact amount of money that we can spend on things like this, but part of COVID future concerns is air quality, and we will definitely have to link any expenditures to COVID and making sure that we're, you know, replacing equipment that really is worn out, or we can't get parts for anymore, or stuff like that. But at this point in time, out of the 6.2, we anticipate that we might be able to spend as much as 1.8 or 1.9 million on HVAC and related environmental equipment needs. And of course, Dr. Putnam can talk with Buildings and Grounds about those needs. And we'll have to run a really tight rain on it to make sure we pass an audit that will be coming next year on the federal side. We can spend a little money on actually maintaining our buses this summer as we run them for summer school. Again, how many and all that stuff's to be determined, and Dr. Putnam and Mrs. Barker and all those folks, principals are working hard on that as we speak. But we think we could spend maybe up to $30,000 or $40,000 this summer on fuel, doing the regular maintenance on the bus that we don't have to do usually during the summer, because they're not running the yellow buses, and even some repair part cost for things that break over the summer. Right now, we anticipate about $600,000 in additional technology needs. We bought a lot of computers last year for students and staff and iPads, but they were used every single day in lots of varied conditions, and some of them didn't make it out alive. So the computers and the iPads. And so we'll need to do some replacing there, but I'm sure that when we get to that, Kim Jackson and her staff will do a really good job of making sure that we're following the COVID rules and making the right purchases. There's, we anticipate maybe another half a million or so. Again, this is over the course of the life of the money which goes into 2023. We may have out of ESER II another half million dollars related to learning loss, and that might be like help during the school year, or if, heaven forbid, we have another surge, which we all hope that we're well past, paying for substitutes and things like that. So that money is there. We anticipate spending probably a little over $100,000 for, in one of the categories called special populations, that's mainly EC students. We know that they can do really well with the right services, but we know that COVID has really put a significant impact on services for those students. In terms of mental health support, we anticipate spending on COVID funds in the range of $90 to another $100,000 in those areas to expand services that are provided through either counseling or social workers or licensed clinical social workers. And you all know that we've had those conversations about we're hiring some licensed clinical social workers who can actually provide some therapeutic services and bill. There are counselors who also have that licensure, just depends on the person's credentials. So our plan right now is to tell you, and really the community, because, you know, they could come to the meeting or listen, one or the other, that that is the plan and those funds are coming. And then what we will do in August, when summer school is over, we will reevaluate and see what we've spent, look at HVAC that we can spend on, and look at what we think future summer school costs might include. And we would come back to you at that time and talk about spending funds that weren't spent this summer, and they certainly will not all be, but you could spend, you could spend half of it this summer. You really could, depends on how many students end up in the summer learning plan. One of the things that I just wanted to tell you all in a work session is there is the ability to give people a retention bonus if they have been with us throughout the pandemic. And I think that is one of the things we will want to come back and talk to you about as a board and see what kind of funds we have in hand after we've done our first big summer school and give that some significant consideration. We've been able to do a few things, like I mentioned earlier, with a designated bonus for some of our frontline employees last year, and certainly some of the people who are willing and selected for summer school can earn some extra money. But we think we can do something very legitimately with the COVID funds for a broad, maybe even all of our employees who have been with us for a certain amount of time throughout the pandemic. But we don't want to talk too much about that right now, because we don't know how much money we might have in hand until probably we get into early August. So that's the, that's the big painted picture on ESER II, and I was shocked at how quickly the first ESER went, and I think that's going to happen again with ESER II. That's a lot of money. The good news, I think, folks, and you may have some other, any questions about this, is our case counts are down. Now, I send those to you and text those to you when they impact our students, our staff members. And the good news is, is we're getting some federal and state money. The bad news is, is there's still a lot of work to be done to recover fully, and I think that work is going to last a couple, three more years. We'll have some money to do it with, though, and that's good. We'll just have to make sure that we do it in a way that it is intended to be spent, and we're not, you know, chastised or reprimanded by auditors or the federal government or the state government who gave us the money. But we think we can do that. We're pretty experienced in dealing with federal funds. So there you go. That's a big, broad sweep on ESER II. Any questions about that?
Did you say at one time there may be a possible third drop?
There is a third drop. I've got it right here after, right.
My question was going to be, I know you said this, this SR2 money is supposed to last through 2023, so it's, you know, another basically two years. And if we're going to spend half of it possibly this year, you know, is there plans on, you know, looking at maybe putting some away for that second or third?
Well, here's the good news. We're not going to need to put any away for that. Because ESER III is coming. It goes one more year. It goes into the fall of 2024. It's completely wrapped up in Christmas, but you all know what it's like to close a year. You all have been on the board a while, and you know, a couple, three months ahead of time, everything's got to be ordered and in and inventoried and paid for and all that kind of stuff. But it goes another year, and it's at least twice as big as ESER II. It has the same opportunities for addressing learning loss and mental health and special populations and support services and environmental improvements, and it has the same constraints. You know, we will have to document that when we bought the HVAC system or whatever we bought, that it is replacing something that did not work or was not going to work more than a few months and things like that. But, so that's the good news. The case counts are down. Our federal government and state government, through some Gears funds, governors' control funds, are providing us with what are substantial amounts of money. The bad news is, is it's going to go, that money will go a lot quicker than people think for very legitimate reasons. And the other part of the bad news is, is the work has not decreased just because the case counts are down. But that's okay. You know, we all signed up for it, and, you know, that's the big ESER picture, and it's mainly good news.
Is there any way to hire more teachers or additional teaching staff with some of that money?
We will, but here's, here's what you have to do. And that's a great question, and we've had that conversation in our office, the four of us, who spend more time together than we should, and the principals, and with Lisa Thompson too, who has turned into a really good Federal Programs Director in a short amount of time. You can, but you also have to have a sustainability plan, so when you get to the fall of 2023 and the fall of 2024, that you're not picking up the salaries for 20 or 30 people. So one of the things that we have talked about, and I don't want to get too far ahead, let's, y'all know how I've been through this thing and its workforce. Let's go out about three or four weeks and do that work, and then we'll see how that goes, and then come back and talk to you about the next.
There's a plan in place.
There is, there is a plan, and we've talked about it many, many times. And we, I just have to keep reminding other administrators, not necessarily these guys, but there's a lot of money here, but it's not Christmas. You know, it has to be spent a certain way, and it's not like giving out candy on trick or treat when whoever comes to the door. It has to match up. We have talked about, and someone has dialed in, and I think they're sitting in a rocking chair, rocking back and forth, and your, and your phone is rubbing on, oh, they've, they've heard me. Maybe, maybe not. Sorry about the background noise if you're listening in. So one of the things that, that Mr. Heinz has already done for us to help us think, we're not acting yet, you know, before we act, we always talk to you all, because you have to approve employment, right? But one of the things that we've done is, in particular with the young ones, students I'm talking about, is finding the average number of retirements and resignations in those lower grades and making sure that if we were to hire a few positions, that we could dial those back in two years. No more than three. There are some things too, and again, this is a conversation we have had many times as a board and, and, you know, senior admin here, is hiring people who can produce funding to sustain themselves. And so we haven't seen that yet, because we just started doing that about a year ago. But there, I think some of the people that we hire can produce some revenue through mental health services, but we've not seen that, and we want to be able to rely on it pretty well. You know, because the last thing I want is to really work on actualizing a budget, and I feel good, because we're getting closer and closer and closer. And I think this time next year, we'll be going, woo, you know, and then blow it, because we, we weren't careful. I learned from Dr. Garrett, when we got the ARA money during the economic downturn, that if you do that really well, you'll be better off. And we were able to live off the saving, local savings that we had with the ARA money. And so I think if we'll do this right, we'll be okay. But we do have to have a sustainability plan, and we do have to have, we do have to be very, very careful. And I have some things that we will talk to you all about really soon along those lines about hiring. But, you know, right now, we're just trying to get summer school, summer learning, I's dotted, T's crossed, convince students to come, so we know how many teachers we're going to hire, and Dr. Putnam can work on buses and school food service and all that other stuff. And then when we get that box pretty much checked off, then we'll, we'll talk with you all about the next steps.
I think summer school's probably a great jump start to make up for lost learning over the course of the last year. Does this money provide us with continual, or should I say additional, say Title I funds, so that we can continue to remediate, maybe even at a higher rate throughout the year?
We do have some funds in there for learning loss during the year. Again, we can't hire too many permanent people, because they'll be there when we get finished.
Hopefully you do and taper out.
That's right. That's, that's right. And we've had that conversation.
She gave me money to say all this.
Yeah, I'm sure she did. I'm sure she did. She is, you all let me hire with, with your approval, both these folks to my left, and they're both very fanatical and very driven on their areas. And so I'm sure she paid you. I hope she paid you well. I'm surprised Dr. Putnam has not given you a question too, but.
We'll get to it.
Okay, okay. But anyway, yes, I, I do think, I do think that most of the future summer work and work during future school years will probably be coming out of ESER III.
And see, to me, the biggest advantage we have. And see, to me, the, the biggest advantage we have, and, and listen, I think summer school is a great jumpstart. But there's going to be a limited amount of participation.
That's right.
During the summer. However, while we've got that captive group during the school year, I think that might be the better time to try to make up for learning loss.
She not only paid you, but she gave you good talking points. Yes, sir. Yes, she did.
I've got a few more.
Yeah, okay.
If I need them.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think we can go there. I would just ask you for a little bit of time for us to make sure summer school's up and running.
You got to next school.
Yeah, and then we'll go, we'll go on.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
You quit breathing heavy.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rogers, you're a preacher. Can you not speak up a little louder next time?
Oh, my.
I've been out of the pulpit for a couple of weeks now, so.
Yeah, I hear you, brother. All right, yeah, I could barely hear you. All right, we're good to go. Thank you.
Is that all he wants?
Is that all you wanted to ask? You just wanted to come on there and dog me? Is this loud enough?
Just want to let you know I, let you know I'm listening to you.
I would remind our listeners that you want a board like this. It gets along and argues about what they want to argue about. And they're not too worried about anything except what's good for kids.
Exactly.
And that's a blessing. Again, I, I, I'm just doing this because it's the truth. I hear the horror stories from across North Carolina where boards weren't as strong as you about making sure children learned and got safely back in school. And so just ignore us if you're listening in. We're passionate about it and sometimes we, we express that in lots of ways. So unless there are other questions, I just, I have the S R stuff and then we, and certainly we'll talk to you about that. We do have a couple of other things that we want Mrs. Barker and Dr. Putnam to do. And Mr. Heinz may jump in and help us with those things, too, because he's been talking to us about the personnel side of, of those things.
Sounds like a lot of money, but I know we'll go through it pretty quickly when you start looking at the size of our system and, and the many facets that we're trying to address.
Yeah, we were shocked.
Yeah.
That it, that COVID really did cost that much.
It's expensive.
It really did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, federal government and state government for sending some money so we can try to get fully recovered.
Very good.
Who's up next?
Jill.
Ms. Barker.
Jill Barker.
Chairman Francis and members of the board. Can you hear me, Mr. Rogers?
I can hear you, Ms. Barker.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Just a brief update on summer school. I know we had talked about it earlier, but as you're aware, House Bill 82 was signed into law. And that, that law requires school districts to offer this summer extension, learning recovery and enrichment program outside of the school calendar this year. We don't know in future years if that will be required, but we know we will have some funding to, to use if we, if we need to. But the purpose of the program is to offer in-person instruction on specific subjects in grades K-12. And really, as Dr. Nolte talked about, you know, just to address the learning losses and negative impacts students have experienced. Specifically about Haywood County's program, I just want to give you a good update here. We will be operational for 150 hours this summer, beginning on June 9th and ending on August 5th. The first and last day will be extended for enrichment activities. And that will put us a little over 100 or right at 150 hours. The hours of operation will be from 8:00 to 12:30, Monday through Thursday. The site locations originally for elementary were going to be our two sites that we've been hosting our reading camps in the summer, which were North Canton and Clyde. But because we've expanded this to fourth and fifth grade, we have included Hazelwood. Those numbers came in on our at-risk students and so we felt like an additional site would be needed. So the site locations for elementary will be North Canton, Clyde and Hazelwood. Middle school will be Canton Middle with Bethel Middle students going to Canton Middle School and Waynesville Middle will have a program. The high schools, our two traditional high schools, Pisgah and Tuscola, will both house summer school programs with Central Haywood High School students and Haywood Early College students participating at one of those sites depending on their transportation needs. We talked a lot with principals and just about how, what Mr. Francis was saying and, and Dr. Rogers trying to encourage kids to come. And we felt like an 8:00 to 12:30 schedule, kids can still have an afternoon to swim and play and all those things that are so important for our students, too, in the summer. And also provide some flexible schedules for our staff, too. So, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that, just having that summer. Just remember, the short title of this bill was called Summer Learning Choice for North Carolina families. And I think it's important to remember that student attendance is not compulsory or teachers working wasn't required. So it is our job to provide access to this and build these great programs that our students want to attend. And, but there's, attendance is not required. So students could come two days, they may, we want to encourage them to come as many days as they want to. And we hope they will, but we also want them to take a vacation or if they need to go to the lake or they want to go, you know, do something with their family, we want to encourage that, too, for our staff, too. So, you know, districts were, we were charged with identifying our at-risk students for participation in the program. And I'll just be honest, we took a wide look at that initially. We want to try to encompass every, every student we can that can come in. Our principals, and it is National Principal Week this week, and so a shout out to them. They have worked very hard in the past two weeks to identify these students based on academic data. And tomorrow, all schools will send out student registration information, including a district letter, an individual's letter from a level, like elementary has a letter, middle school has a different letter, high school. And they will get, E C parents will receive additional information, too. So all that information will be pushed out to our students tomorrow. The data will be collected on paper and pencil in the elementary school. They are used to that system of sending that home and parents sending it back. But then it will be inputted into a district spreadsheet. And thank you, Kim Jackson, for organizing that for us. And we'll get that in a spreadsheet. Middle and high school will include a link for parents to digitally access this registration information. You know, we've already collected preliminary numbers of at-risk to try to help plan. But in this special registration form, we've asked parents if they would like for their child to receive services or if they are not interested. And that, those numbers, once those numbers populate into this spreadsheet, Dr. Putnam and Ms. Francis will really help them adequately plan for transportation and school food service. So we will, we should have that by the middle of next week. And we've got some tentative plans, but Ms. Francis needs to order foods and Dr. Putnam's got to get routes. Don't forget, that was part of this bill that I think the exact wording says that students will be provided transportation to the facility housing the program. So that is required within the bill, too. Just to talk about certified staff, it's also Teacher Appreciation Week, a shout out to them. Man, y'all have killed it this year. If you're out there listening, just thank you, thank you, thank you. As a parent, I thank you. And just in the community, everything you've done, you have held our community together during COVID, our schools and our teachers. So thank you for that. But they received a summer employment interest survey last week. And the names were due Tuesday, this past Tuesday, and we are currently disaggregating that data if they were interested in working this summer. The law, I told you all this earlier, but it requires for local boards to incentivize highly effective teachers if they have received national boards or past performance bonuses, namely. So therefore, when this list is populated and we're looking at that, they will be selected first for employment and will be paid $50 an hour. And other certified staff will be paid $40 an hour. So we want to make sure they're well compensated for this work. It's important work this summer. Principals of the host schools are meeting next week with us. They, they have principal meetings next week, but they will stay after and meet with us. And we will select the staff for their sites at that time next week. Selecting names will be due to Mr. Heinz on May 20th for your approval at the May 24 special call meeting and, and teachers will be notified then. Two directors are also going to be employed at each site to manage the programs this summer. Our principals have a lot, I know being a principal, and most of us here have been, there, it's not, you have a lot of work to do in the summers as principal. That's really where all your planning and, and we just want to make sure these directors will manage those programs so principals can do the important work of opening school and having good plans for our students next year. These directors will be paid $50 an hour and their names will be brought to you for approval Monday night. Daily schedules of what this will look like will be finalized when our teachers are selected and approved. But we have provided our principals with sample schedules. Kim Shipman and Carol Fox have worked really, really hard with our principals and we shared those with them. And, you know, just importance, and we're going to include as many enrichment activities as we can. And we will also provide them access to social emotional supports. We've had counselors that have wanted to do work and social workers, so we will be extending that to them, too. We want it to be a fun opportunity, but we also want to dig in and try to help close these gaps. So when we go back to school next year. Our plan was submitted to North Carolina Department of Instruction on Monday, May 3rd. They have 21 days, I think, to tell us if we need to make any changes and add. And they know it's very preliminary, still some decisions to be made, but that has been submitted. So any questions you have for me just about summer school?
Or Dr. Putnam or Jason, if it relates to them.
I have a couple of questions or a question that, I know that the remote kids are some of the kids that have suffered the most during this COVID and their performance, you know, reflects that in their grades and stuff. Those are the kids we really need to be, you know, reaching out to and getting in, into this program. However, the reason that most of them are remote is parents or for whatever reason, they didn't want them in schools. So I know this summer school has to be in person, correct?
Yes, sir.
How are we going to get some of those remote kids that have been elected to come to class to begin with into our summer school program?
And I'm just, you know, and speaking to the principals, they have been in such close contact with so many of these families. And some of these are situations where students have had to get, you know, they've gotten employment and, and different reasons. So I hope the flexible hours will help them to come in and be able to get some credits, especially in our high school. But these relationships are powerful. And Dr. Nolte started off this school year talking about the importance of these relationships with families would be. And so we're going to really depend on that to get them in. Hopefully smaller classes will help, but our principals feel, they feel good about that. I have not heard them, that has not been a concern yet. And, and again, too, yes, they have, but we've also had kids in school that have struggled. So they're, we've had some remote kids struggle, but we've had some in-person kids that, that have struggled, too. So, you know, because we have not been in school in front of a teacher all year. So I'll keep you updated on that and we'll see. So we just hope to have a good turnout. You know, high school will be mostly focused on credit recovery for courses that have been failed and try to get, continue to get them on track for graduation. And then elementary middle will be really skill specific, just trying to strengthen those gaps and skills.
One thing, the seven schools, it's going to put a little more work on the people that come to my mind immediately are custodians at these seven locations. Has there been any talk about compensating custodial staff down the line beyond the directors and the teachers in the summer programs? Because it's going to take them from their normal summer scope of work into, back into a kind of a normal everyday cleanup vomit, you know, bathroom cleanup, stuff like that where kids are on campus.
That's a great question. You want to speak to that, Dr. Nolte or Dr. Putnam?
I just think if we're, if we're rewarding teachers and directors for showing up and, and helping with summer school, that I think we need to do something for custodial staff and maybe even, you know, people that are there, 11, 12-month employees.
Even bus drivers. To incentivize them to drive buses.
We, we've done some work with attorneys and they, again, because it's federal money and we really shouldn't be supplanting, it's pretty difficult to pay 11 or 12-month employees anything close to what might be considered a salary if they're already receiving a salary. And so what we had planned to do was if the staff that was there could not manage what was going on, whether it was clerical or custodial. And you have to understand, school food service and bus drivers are, this is new territory for them working in the summer, the last couple of years, was to maybe try to find some people who weren't working and have them come in and help. I think we could explore bonuses for those folks. But we'll have to explore that very, very carefully and make sure that that's not an audit exception and know that whatever we spend there is just coming out of the big pot.
That's fair. I mean, I just, that came to show how selfless our teachers are. Three or four phone calls this week came from teachers about custodial staff. So I think that was awesome coming from somebody that didn't directly affect.
Yeah, part of the, and again, like I said, there are lots of, earlier, there are lots of opportunities with this money, but there are also lots of constraints. The funds can't really be used in any way to contribute to retirement. And so that's the rationale for doing some of the hourly pay for the folks that are hired specifically to do summer school. So we're not above exploring anything. When we met with principals the other day and went over next steps with them, one of the things that Jason and Mr. Heinz said to them is, you know, we've talked to this attorney and we've talked to this state association and we've read these federal rules and here's what we know. And if you all think of something else, we'll be glad to explore it. So we can go back and look at that, certainly. But, but paying 12-month or 11-month people, anything that would come close to a salary is going to be tough.
So a bonus would be more appropriate?
Yeah, maybe. We'll look at it. Be glad to look at it.
Thank you.
Any other questions about summer school?
Sounds good. I think we're good.
And also we celebrated our nurses today and just a shout out to them. Dr. Putnam and Michelle Swanger, Julie Davis, and I just tried to have a luncheon for them, to honor them. He and I both have worked with the nurses this year, he in a new role and just traditional nurses. So we just can't thank them enough for everything they've done this year, too. So if you see them, thank a nurse, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Any other summer school questions for Jill or Trevor or Jason, myself? Okay. Dr. Putnam, Support Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll just give you a quick update on our central office project. Back you up just a little bit to where, how this has come to fruition. We first secured the building and some funding from the county commissioners. We then worked to select a architect. Architect created plans. Those plans were vetted by folks within the building. We then selected a contractor to complete the work. We seen that we, it would be beneficial to secure a loan to complete the project. I'm telling you all this because along the way, we've tried to incorporate as many people in looking at the plans and vetting the plans and approving the plans as we go along. Which brings us to today. We had, we brought in directors and clerical staff, support staff to, to do a walkthrough because we are at a rough end point. And the contractor and architect and I and Josh met Tuesday, as we do monthly, the first Tuesday of every month for an update. And he said, changes beyond here are going to get really costly. Because from here, we're going to start pulling, pulling wire and, and finalizing some of the interior, interior work, begin hanging sheet rock and, and such. So moving walls or making new locations for windows or adjustments are going to get costly from here. costly from here. So we had the directors and administrative assistants go today that had storage to make sure they had the storage they needed. And tomorrow, we'll bring in the remainder of the directors and support staff that storage wasn't as much of an issue for them. And one last walkthrough and then I'll be calling the contractor, Mr. Bergen tomorrow to say, here are some recommended changes. And then from those changes, we will roll any recommended changes into building and grounds. Hopefully, I don't know about turnaround time on projected cost on those changes, but I'll try to have that for you Monday and we'll evaluate and reflect on how many of those changes do we think we want to do or if any. So that's where we're at. I feel really good about the process. I know Ms. King and Ms. Swanger and myself went over and looked at furniture. We got a, a pretty good quote on furniture to complete that out. If you'll remember, we did a $125,000 set aside slash contingency for the purchase of furniture slash change orders. Josh keeps saving us money through his skill and craft and the way of lighting packages and other things. So we, you know, he, he's creating a little bit of cushion for some changes on the project. So it's progressing nicely. We're, Dr. Nolte I know and Ms. Barker and Mr. Hines all, and Ms. King all went through and walked through today. It's exciting to see what it can be and what it is going to be, being there today. So, and then you'll see, in Support Services, you'll see some recognitions Monday night and I'm going to save those. Just want to say I'm very grateful for the highly skilled and quality directors we have in, in our, our departments. They will be recognizing a couple of those Monday night. So I'll save that for Monday night. Any questions in the way of Support Services? I can tell you the turf projects are complete. We have warranty in hand. The last remaining item was windscreen on the backside of the fence and it is hung and complete. And we have begin, began, begun, however you say it, begin, begun.
Started.
Started, thank you. All, just choose a whole nother word altogether. Started working through the short-term, at least two of the short-term projects y'all designated through facility planning. Central elementary renovations in the kindergarten building are underway. We're waiting for lottery money to drop so that we can make even more significant renovations over there. The plumbing has been completely replaced. If you'll remember, it froze and ruined the ceiling tiles and all of that had to be repaired. But because Josh hired a licensed plumber, we were able to do that in short order, self-perform that for little to no money at all. And we have begun work on, I'm trying to remember, getting quotes for designers for items two and three, one being see whether be parking area water mitigation issue that we have there, as well as the physical education expansion plan. We have architects and designers in hand for that and I'll be taking that to building and grounds for consideration of a designer. So we're making good headway. It's, we're, we're moving in, in a really swift but cautious and careful manner.
Very good. Anyone have any questions?
Just one announcement. Mr. Francis, I was asked to participate in a National Day of Prayer activity this morning and be there as a representative as they prayed for educators and in, in particular, our school system.
Thank you. Okay, I guess that's the end of our regular agenda and just for those that are streaming, we're going to be going into a closed session. We will not take any action tonight. So we will adjourn from the work session now and we will just adjourn and then we'll go into closed session after we have a brief recess.